We call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the August 29, 2013 Upshur County Commission meeting.
Good morning.
Morning Jackie.
Morning Jackie.
Morning. Well, first of all, we'll note that there is an error on the first paragraph. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, August 29, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, J.C. wasn't there, Megan Pomeroy County Administrator, Jennifer Dinklo, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of August 22, 2013 as submitted. Megan Pomeroy provided a review of the Prevention Resource Officer Agreement by and between the Upshur County Board of Education, the Upshur County Sheriff's Office, and the Upshur County Commission for Fiscal Year 2013-2014 PRO Program at Buchanan Upshur High School. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the renewal contract. Donnie Tenny and Megan Pomeroy provided a review of four-year information agenda items, number one and two. Number one, correspondence and executed contract from the Division of Justice and Community Services regarding Community Corrections Grant Award Project #14-CC-15 in the amount of $247,495 for the period of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Number two, West Virginia Trail Inventory at www dot mapwestvirginia.gov/trails. Mary Alba, American Legion Post Adjutant, appeared before the Commission and reviewed a Day to Remember Proclamation, a memorial to the victims of September 11, 2001 terrorist attacks. Ms. Alba also reviewed the American Legion Day Proclamation designating September 16, 2013, as American Legion Day in Upshur County in recognition of legionnaires in our community for their many contributions to our community, and the National POW/MIA Recognition Proclamation, which designates September 20, 2013 as POW/MIA Recognition Day in Upshur County. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the proclamations. At 9:20 a.m. on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission entered executive session per West Virginia Code 6-98-4 to discuss the employment of a part-time administrative assistant for the office of the County Commission. Present were Donnie Tenny, Troy Brady, Megan Pomeroy, and Jennifer Dinklo. The Commission returned to open session at 9:35 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the employment of Kimberly Taylor as part-time administrative assistant as recommended by Megan Pomeroy. Effective date of employment is September 2, 2013 at the rate of $8 per hour. Donnie Tenny reviewed the following four-year information items. Number three, City of Buchanan, August Buchanan Gateway East Transportation Enhancement Project. Number four, Agendas and/or Notices of Meetings as listed. Number five, Meeting Minutes and/or Financial Reports as listed. Number six, Meetings as listed. Number seven, Appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following request for time out of office as listed for Commission employees. The Commission approved the following request to attend meeting for Commission employees as listed. At 11:00 a.m., Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Senate Director, appeared before the Commission and requested an executive session meeting per West Virginia Code 6-98-4 to discuss E-911 staff functions and activities. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission entered the executive session. Present were Donnie Tenny, Troy Brady, Megan Pomeroy, Jennifer Dinklo, Steve Linger, Prosecuting Attorney Jacob Rieger, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Kelly Cunningham, Sheriff David Kaufman, Deputy Mark Davidson, and Jacqueline Dinklocker. The Commission returned to open session at 11:45 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. The Commission reassessed at 11:45 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 7:00 p.m. at the Upshur County Courthouse Annex to attend the joint meeting with Buchanan City Council. Present were Upshur County Commission Representatives, Donnie Tenny, Troy Brady, Megan Pomeroy, Jennifer Dinklo, and Jacqueline Dinklocker, and Buchanan City Council Members, Kenneth Davidson, Rich Clemmons, Pamela Capery, David Thomas, Ron Pugh, City Administrator Michael Dos, and City Engineer Jay Holland. The following agenda items were discussed. The call to order pledge to the flag. 7:00 p.m., Bill Hamilton, House of Delegates Representative. Presentation on Legislative Goals for 2014 relating to substance abuse at 7:30 p.m. Discussion regarding water issues. With no further business, a joint meeting of the Upshur County Commission and the Buchanan City Council adjourned at 7:45 p.m.
Are there andations or corrections to the minutes other than what Jackie pointed out? Not unasked for motion, it would be approved as such.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we have about five minutes before our 9:15 appointment, so we will drop down to items for discussion, action, possible approval. The first item is approved resignation of Stacy Truman, Community Corrections Case Manager, effective Friday, September 13, 2013. Just a straightforward resignation to move on to...
She turned in her letter to Micah, the Director, and listed September 13 as her last day after two weeks.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve the resignation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries. Next item is promotion of part-time Community Corrections Case Manager Melanie Edmund to full-time Case Manager effective September 9, 2013.
She was a part-time Case Manager, as it says, and I know that Micah talked to the Board, I believe, to approve her salary, or her... And so they have approved moving her to full-time.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this employment change?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries. Next item is approval resignation of part-time E-911 Dispatcher Gloria Burr, effective August 25, 2013. Is that one of our newer...
Yes, she was also part-time, a new dispatcher going through training, and she decided to pursue...
Pursue a different career.
Pursue other...
It's a very demanding job, and many times people through the training process determine that it's just not something that they can deal with, pressure and whatnot. I'll move to accept that resignation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries. Next item is promotion of part-time E-911 Dispatcher Jody Martin to full-time dispatcher effective September 8, 2013. Pay rate remains effective at $10.29 per hour.
This is another part-time employee in training, I believe, who has gone through everything and decided that she does want to stay.
Okay. Well, we're glad for those that do want to stay after they go through everything.
That's true.
So, do we have a motion to approve this change in employment?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries. Next item is employment of part-time Animal Control Facility employee at the rate of $8 per hour.
This is a position that became vacated recently. It's approximately 19 and a half hours per week, and after doing interviews, we would recommend that we hire Kristy Riffle. She's been a volunteer out there for a little bit and has just done a wonderful job. She'd be a great candidate, I think, for the position.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the hiring of Kristy Riffle?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? We just want to make sure that since she's been a volunteer, that she can't volunteer now that she's getting paid at the same place.
Right. Yeah, we did discuss that.
Yeah, so she understands that.
Yes.
Good. Well, I think she'll be a good addition to the Animal Control Facility. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries. Next item is review and approved request from Brooks, Fred Brooks Garden Club, dedication of Blue Star Byway Marker, September 11, 2013, from 11:00 to 11:30.
This is just basically, they're doing the dedication. I know the Garden Club has worked on a number of flower beds for the county and city, and so they just like the opportunity to do a dedication outside by that marker.
We certainly appreciate all that they do to help beautify the courthouse and the city and the county, so I would ask for a motion that we approve this request.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries.
And I think we should recognize those members for the beautification efforts.
I mean, yourself being a landscaper, I mean, you know the beauty that that brings. Well, they do the flower beds out in front of the courthouse every year, so they do a great job. And we have approval of Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility Volunteer Brenda Lee. And this is another individual that's... Has all the paperwork come in on...
Yes, we have both the application and the signed copy of the policies and procedures.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries now. Well, we're on this subject, we had several we approved pending the paperwork. How are we doing on that?
We did receive a few of the additional pieces of paperwork that we needed. I don't think we received all of them, but they are aware of that.
Okay, okay, so, okay, well, it's 9:15, and we have Stacy Saunders, Hall Neighbor's House Recovery Month Proclamation. So who else is going to come up and do the reading? There she is.
Good morning. How are you all today?
Good.
Wish I could say better, but I'm...
She's got the flu, but...
Oh, no.
So stay away from J.C.
Stay away, this is the...
I will stay right back here. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of family with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas in 2011, 2.3 million people aged 12 or older received specialty treatment for a substance use disorder, and 31.6 million adults aged 18 or older received mental health services according to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who need help. And whereas on October 1, 2013, as a result of the Affordable Care Act, more than 11 million uninsured individuals with behavioral health needs will become eligible for affordable insurance coverage for their treatment needs, according to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. We must ensure that all these individuals are successfully enrolled into coverage. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HHS, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, ONDCP, invite all residents of Upshur County to participate in National Recovery Month. Recovery Month. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries. Do we want to get a picture? Okay, okay.
Last minute thought, I was actually going to ask the County Commission, Opportunity House is getting ready to submit two grants to the Bureau of Health and Health Facility. One would provide funding for the first time for us at this, from the state, to operate Opportunity House and to hopefully provide for some capital improvements and fire safety stuff. And the other grant that we're applying for would give us a path coordinator. Path is projects and assistance to transition from homelessness, and that grant would provide us funding for like an outreach coordinator, somebody to actually go out and work with people who are currently homeless and just getting them transitioned into permanent housing. And we'd like to ask the Commission for just a letter of support, we're not asking for resources or anything like that. We'll work out the specifics.
Yeah, we can work out.
How many clients do you have now?
Oh, boy. Right now I have 11 in one house, we've got five in another house. We have, I think I have 10, none of my 13 apartments are full. We've actually had a pretty good year. We just completed the first year of operating our apartment project, and in that year we only had one person relapse into substance abuse. Rest of them all stayed clean. We reunited seven children with their families, so it's been a pretty good year.
Very good. Appreciate all your work, and I'm sure those that you help appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have, well, we've got Jan at 9:30, and we've got just a few minutes here, so if you all, if anyone does have to leave, our next presentation's in about 20 minutes, but we appreciate if you could stay for the presentation on the Americanism. And we've, we've got a couple more things I think we can go over before Jan's time's up at 9:30, so...
Number eight.
Pardon? Yeah, number eight. We're approval of Community Participation Grant Application, Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 36 Building Upgrades for $8,000. If you'd like to...
We are applying for an $8,000 grant for the Disabled American Veterans for improvements on their community building, for miscellaneous improvements like their meeting rooms, converting an old bathroom into a storage closet, some outside upgrades, landscaping, and adding some insulation. We've approved, we've applied and received a $10,000 grant for them previously, and they have completely remodeled their kitchen, worked on some ceilings and some floors, and it really does look really nice.
Very good.
And this is an additional $8,000 for the same...
This is an additional $8,000 for continued...
Up at Carter, is that where it's located?
I'm sorry.
Up at Carter, is that where it's located?
On Alexander Road.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'd need a motion to approve this application.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we have, on page 10, you'll see our monthly building permit applications for the county. A total of $1,465,706. So we've got a lot of construction going on in the county. A lot of them are residences and some are businesses also, so that's a good sign for the county. And we have agendas and notices of our meetings coming up, and on page 11, Upshur County OEM Announcement Regarding Potable Water Supply Exercise. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit, Megan?
Sure, this is just something that our OEM asked me to get out there. They are having an exercise on September 18 regarding potable water after the disasters that we had in 2012. It's kind of come up as an issue that may need to be addressed, and they're just asking for local agencies, businesses, health, agriculture, sewer to get involved and come out and participate in that. So their contact information is on there. It's on September 18 at 1 o'clock, so just a little bit of information there about that exercise.
Okay. And we talked a little bit about this at our city-county meeting because all the public service districts in Mount Hope Water buy their water from the City of Buchanan, who treat the water that's used by county, city, and county residents, and they talked a little bit about the, what their plan of action was. Last year, I guess, was quite a drought year, and there were, the question I asked was, has the water ever stopped going over the dam? And they said that last year there was about three foot wide section of water that was running over the dam, so that's about as low as it's been for several years. And when the water does stop running over the dam, or if it does stop running over, then the reservoir behind it is enough to last for, I believe they said 75 days, something like that. So at that point in time, when the water stops running over the dam, is when they would start initiating rationing, and probably car washes, and the bigger users would be restricted or limited, so... And then there's the old Upshur Mines, there's an agreement to take and pump water, which has millions and millions of gallons of water in the mines. At one point in time, I remember in the past, they did pump water, elevated the mine into the, eventually goes into the Buchanan River, and it's, the water's very hard, water. It takes some extra chemicals to treat it, but at least it's water. So that's kind of the, that's where it all begins, is in the Buchanan River and the City of Buchanan treating the water and then goes out into the community, so the PSDs and Mount Hope Water Association. So, you know, what is it, the body, I believe, is 90% water, so that's a pretty important ingredient in our lives is to have, is to have potable water and a lot of good drinking water and water that we use. You probably don't realize, I'm just out living here because we've got about three minutes, so if you'll bear with me. Unless you have something, Megan?
I, no, I'm...
Well, it's kind of interesting, as we talk about water, I don't think we realize how much water that we as Americans use and probably waste if we think about it, along with other, a lot of things that we waste. As you look at third world countries and, you know, what they do without, I was reminded in one of my trips to the Philippines, where their water is very limited, and they have, most of them have like a 300 gallon tank, and they pump the water into that tank, and you have, that has to last so long. So they're forced to ration their water, or if they use it all, they just run out of water for the rest of the week or whatever the time period is before they fill their tank up with water again. And it was quite a challenge for me to take a shower with two gallons of water. That's what, that's what they, they said an average shower in the Philippines was like two gallons of water. That was quite a challenge to be able to do that. And then, you know, then you come back here to the United States, and there's nothing to stand in the shower, especially if you're cold and it's nice and warm for five or 10 minutes. And we just, we don't, I don't think we realize what we have until we don't have it. And there's a lot of things like water that, and a lot of things in life that we should appreciate more than we do. And that's my little talk about water. And now, we are down to 9:30, and it's Jan Cochran from the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility, and she's going to give us an update regarding a fundraising event that they had last week. Morning, Jan.
Morning, Jan.
I wasn't expecting to stand in front of this many people.
You never know when you're going to have a crowd.
This is a crowd.
This is a good, positive crowd, though. It's always good to have good, positive crowds.
Okay. August 24, we held an adoption event at Southern States. Southern States was gracious enough to let us use their facility. One of our volunteers, Beth House, was the one that really wanted to put this on, and she did a wonderful job. Her and her daughter went to Walmart a couple weekends before that. They stood at the Walmart doors on a Sunday morning with their jugs, please donate. I think they raised like $170 some dollars that day. She went to all the businesses, took it upon herself to get the donations for the hot dog sale, pop sale, and chips that we sold, plus we did raffles, and she collected everything. The day of the event, her daughter wanted to help, well, since she's not old enough to be a volunteer, the only thing she could do was make sure the dogs kept in water, and she did an excellent job. So Katie House, her name, and she was just, she was excited to be there, and them dogs were probably glad that she was filling that water bowl because it was a really pretty day. But we end up raising $852.36, and this was donations from businesses plus what we raised selling the hot dogs and the raffles and what was collected at Walmart. I gave both newspapers a list of everybody, all the businesses that somehow contributed, and we couldn't do it without those businesses, and we couldn't have done it without the individuals of Upshur County that donated a 12-pack of pop, hot dog bones, you know, just different things. We put it on Facebook, and people were like, we'll meet you. And she set it sheets for one hour one day and said, I'll be here to collect donations. And she sat there for an hour in her vehicle while people brought stuff for us to use, paper plates, napkins, and that kind of thing. So Beth did a wonderful job. We have an adoption event coming up next Saturday at the Robins Nest. This will be the second one that has benefited our shelter. The first year they put it on, it benefited Adopt a Friend in Weston. Last year, they invited us, and they invite us again this year. Last year, I do believe they raised almost $700 for us. Everything that they raise benefits the shelter. At the end of the day, they give us a check for everything they raised. The events are free for kids, but they do sell hot dogs and pop, and they do raffles, plus some businesses donate into it. There's a pet show, they invite us up with animals to adopt, and we can walk up there and we say, this is who we are, and these are the animals that are available for adoption, and there are other animals at the shelter that are available, so people can adopt, and we adopted a few out last year. At Southern States, we took three dogs with us. We did not adopt one of those dogs, but when people come down to the event and they seen what we were doing, and we told them, we brought these three because they're bigger, we wanted people to see them, get some exposure out there, they went back and we adopted six dogs that day at the shelter. We adopted three kittens we took to the event, and we adopted one adult cat that we took to the event. So not only did we make some proceeds, we adopted some animals, and that's the most important thing. We have, our next spay neuter run is scheduled for September 26, and I have four openings left, and they're dogs. All my cat spots are used, and I'm down to four spots for dogs, so it filled pretty quick. Within less than a week, we had 30 spots on the field.
You might explain how that works when you talk about...
The spay neuter truck is a truck that a couple businesses donated us the money. And we went to an auction and we bought a senior citizen van. We knew when we bought there was a problem with it. We took it to a mechanic, they told us what the problem was, they'd already had it at Jenkins, and they knew. The part cost us $1,200. Community people donated us money to get this vehicle fixed. We found a mechanic that did it for like so cheap because of the cause that we were doing it for. And this truck is available to anybody in our surrounding counties. And what we do is we sign up in the nice months of the year, we'll call the clinic in Huntington, and we'll say, we want 30 or 40 spots, and we'll take so many dogs and so many cats, and then we start advertising it. You come into the shelter, you fill out the form for that clinic, give them permission to do the surgery, you pay for it in advance, and that saves your spot, and then we take your dog or cat to Huntington, and we spend the whole day up there, and then we bring your animal back that evening. For a male cat, it's $27 to have him neutered. For a female cat, it's $47, and for dogs, it's $60, and then if you get into up over 60 pounds, it goes to 65. There is an additional charge if you want pain meds, which they recommend for any dog over 40 pounds, and that is an extra $15. You can also have any vaccines you want done for a really reasonable price, and they do the rabies... the rabies shot free for every animal that's getting spayed. So this is a very cheap way for our county residents and surrounding counties to get their animals fixed. And we just want to stop the number of animals out there because there's not enough homes, you know? So if people just spay or neuter, then we wouldn't have as many animals coming into the shelter and we wouldn't be overcrowded. And then the ones that were coming into the shelter could have more time than what they have. So we are big supporters of the spay neuter, because I can't preach enough how much you need to spay or neuter your pet. So we're happy with this truck. And I mean, you know, it's a great compliment for the businesses around here and residents to donate towards this truck because they see the need for it. So this is like, like my baby or something, I just, I'm really proud of this program. Yesterday, we ordered the surveillance cameras for the shelter. They should be here next week, and then Greg said probably towards the end of the week, if they're in, we'll start assembling them on the shelter. We were going to get nine cameras, but when I called, they didn't have a package for nine, and it was actually going to cost me more to get that extra camera than it was to get these 12. So we just went with 12. And right now, we have one monitor and we are going to eventually buy another monitor so we can have one in the back of the building, so when we're there by ourselves, we can see what's going on. Like if someone's coming up outside, we can see they're coming into office. But they don't sell the monitor with the right kind of hookup. It only, the DVD player that they, comes with the package, is only set for their, one plug for the monitors they sell. So we have to go somewhere else and pick up another monitor, it takes a different kind of plug in. And he explained to me what kind of monitor we'd have to get. So I'll just check with Sears or something like that. The costs for that come to $853.98. And the county now has Facebook page for the shelter. So any of you guys that want to become a member, just look us up, where it's Lewis Upshur Animal Control and Lewis Upshur's all together. Right now, we have 389 friends on the site, and it's changing every day. We're adding 10 to 20 people a day, and it's been up since this weekend. We've actually had a few rescues that have joined us that we didn't even know anything about, and then they are recommending other rescues to check our shelter out. So I think this is going to be something positive. So far, everything's really been good on the Facebook page, no negativity. So I think it's just great.
How many rescue groups are you working with now?
Oh, my gosh. On an aver, like ones we deal with constantly, we probably have 10 that we deal with every month. But then if you get, there's a lot of rescues that are just purebreds. So we get a collie and we'll deal with them, a collie rescue. But the 10 we deal with on a monthly basis are all breed, they'll take anything. But we probably have about 100 in the network total in rescues that we deal with.
And what would you say on those, just an estimate, how many, how many animals are rescued through rescue groups a month?
I think it averages out to, we probably send anywhere from 30 to 60 a month to rescues. It's just depending on our intake that we take in that month. And we're taking in, average, just from animal control officers, we're usually taking in around 60 to 70 dogs a month. And then you have your residents that bring in animals and in your drop box. But you know, that all changes from, depends on what season it is, too. We see a lot more dogs from spring to fall, and then in fall, it starts dying down, we don't have many. And then you have to look at how many are still sitting in the shelter, because even though a month went by and we might have sent 60 dogs out to rescues, we probably have five or 10 owner pickups, and then let's say 20 adoptions, you still probably got 30 sitting in the shelter that are waiting to either, hopefully their owners are going to come get them, or send them to rescue, or something like that. A lot of people think that we euthanize every week. As far as dogs, we don't. It's been like three weeks since we've had to euthanize a dog. Cats, yeah, we do. We usually have to euthanize twice a week for cats. But we are getting in, last month, we had 152 cats brought into our shelter. That's a lot of cats. And it takes a lot of time to clean those cats. It's a lot different with the cats because you're taking each litter box out, you're dumping it, you're washing it, you're each tray, each food and water dish, and you're putting it all back. And if you move a cat out of the cage, then you have to go back and you bleach that whole cage. It has to set 15 minutes before you can put anything else in it. That way, we're not spreading disease. Because pan luke has been a really big thing at our shelter this year. Last year, the vets say it's really when it started showing its head, and it's like a parvo in dogs, but it's called pan luke. Animals can look perfectly fine, and you can come in, you can adopt, and within a week, they can show it. And there's nothing we can do. We vac, we're vaccinating, the county is buying us 50 vaccines a month. But if the animal's already carrying it and we give that vaccine, it's going to show its head in a couple of days. You know, it's the first vaccine, getting them started, but it's the second, third and fourth that's really boosting that system. And that's hard for some people to understand. And we don't adopt anything out that we feel is sick. We would tell you, you know, he better stay away from this, it's just not been acting right the last few days. But something can leave healthy today and be sick tomorrow. You know, it's just like us, we could be fine today and tomorrow we have the flu.
Thank you for that vote.
We'll tell his wife to use more bleach.
I think we'll have to take a closer look at your budget next year.
And put more money in it.
Yes, that's, that's right.
Because you're doing such a good job.
Thank you. You guys have any other questions?
And volunteers as well.
Yes.
You've got four minutes there to talk. So you can either talk or we can ask you questions and make you talk, it'll be up to you, Dan.
Well, I'm going to, since we've had a bunch of people decide to volunteer recently and come up to the shelter, and the dogs are getting walked, and they're really enjoying getting out of those cages and be able to, you know, run on that leash and be played with, or just set up on the, up on the shade, being petted, being bathed, because there's not enough time for the staff to do all this. You barely make it through a day and get everything you need to get done. So, I mean, the volunteers are doing great. So I know we had talked about maybe doing like an open house thing at the shelter one day, maybe having a cake and having the volunteers and any of the public that would like to come up and see the shelter. So I think that's still a great idea. We're getting ready to do like an orientation with the volunteers so that they're more familiar with everything, where everything is at our shelter. Because right now, you know, they know where the leashes and stuff are, but they don't know where other things are. So, you know, that, they usually stop me and I go find what they're wanting. So we're going to kind of do an orientation so they know. But we've got a lot of great volunteers that are really networking our animals, and they're not only networking our animals, they're willing to transport these animals to rescues. Because the thing about rescues is most of our rescues are out of state. And we're talking, we've got three leaving today, four leaving today. We got one from the shelter and three that had been in the shelter but went into a boarding facility. They're going to Minnesota today. And we have a volunteer from Upshur County that's one of our volunteers, and she's driving them, I think, all the way to Columbus. And she's going to do that whole leg there, and then they're going to hit a couple more legs to get to where they're going. And without people like that, it wouldn't be possible for these animals.
On your, your cat situation, are your numbers running about, how long, how long have we accepted cats? When was it? How many years ago has it been that we?
Starts accepting cats total? I started in 2002 and we were already accepting cats. And I think they said the cat house had been there like two to three years before I started. To, this October makes two years that we've been accepting Lewis County cats. I believe in the last few years, we had less cats than we have had this year. But I don't think a lot of people in Lewis County realized that we would take their cats. And it's, more people are starting to talk, and so they know now, so we're seeing more Lewis County cats coming in. And you think, you get one mother of seven kittens, you know? Average litter is four to seven, and so you get a mother of seven kittens, but that's two double, you know, two cages, make it into a double cage for them. And then city, you know, of course, they trap. Jeff brought in, I think, five last month. Really, his numbers have went down. Because usually, when summer starts, he kills us. I mean, he's constantly in the shelter with, bringing cats in. But it hasn't been that bad this year. So I'm hoping that maybe all the trapping that city has done is starting to show, you know, the effects are positive. They're getting them out of the city. I know Per in Grafton is really wanting to expand what they do, and they do TNR, which is trap, neuter and return. They spay or neuter the animal, they vet it, they put them back into colonies where people agree, volunteers agree to go out and feed, like you might do one day, you would do a day, you would do a day. You know, and then like some stores donate, like their broken bags of feed to them and stuff. So they're wanting to expand that outside of their county. You know, the thing is, you've got to have a place to put these cats. You know, it's great, but then you have to have someone in the county says, well, you can put them on my property or whatever. You know, I don't know how that's going to go. But I'm sure there are some cat lovers out there that would say, hey, I have 200 or some acres, we could put 40 out here, you know, make a colony out here. Per is really good. I think they keep records on everything, like all of their animals. They ear tip them, and then I think when their rabies shots and stuff, they go back out and they start trapping to get the rabies vaccines and stuff done on those animals and keep that up to date. Because I mean, that's the most important thing. They don't want to spread disease, you know, but they are fixing them and then sending them back out to just save their lives. Because there's just not enough homes for them.
Right. Okay, do you have anything else? Because we're, it's 15 till 10. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
As an adjunct, I think, carried a story this week, where in New York City, of all places, we have a, many of us have an idea that New York City and places of that type are cold and distant among themselves, but there was a story in which two kittens were discovered on a subway track. And they shut down the subway, if you can believe that, for two hours in order to locate and recover the kittens.
I'm sure not everybody on that train, on that subway was very happy.
But on a positive.
Yeah.
But on a positive note, that says something about the human condition.
Yeah, it does. I mean, that's great that they did that, but I'm sure there was some upset people.
I'll be certain. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, we have Peggy Shreve and Robert Post, the patronism chairman, and Leslie Shreve, post commander for Auxiliary Unit 7 of the American Legion. Review of mandatory patriotism class approved by the West Virginia State Superintendent.
And I, I have to apologize, I think I got their titles wrong in that, but they did give me a corrected sheet with their proper.
Well, if I got it wrong, you can, you can correct the titles. But we're glad to have you this morning.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. And I'm glad some of you stayed for this presentation. Every year, particularly this year in, with Americanism in this month, with Patriot's Day and the anniversary of 911, we like to remind people, you know, a little bit about what Americanism is and what we work for within the American Legion. As Donnie said, my name is Les Shreve. I'm retired from the Air Force and I'm the commander of Frank B. Bartlett, Post 7 of the American Legion. I might also mention that we are an alcohol-free post. Our preamble begins with the forgotten country we associate ourselves together. Our organization is based upon four pillars: national security, veterans rehabilitation, children and youth, and Americanism. Americanism is what we're here to look at today. It's a characteristic which distinguishes our form of government from others. It is the recognition of the truth that the inherent and fundamental rights of man are derived from God and not from governments, dictators or majorities. Americanism is the love of America, the loyalty to her institution as the best yet devised by man to secure life, liberty, individual dignity and happiness, and the willingness to defend our country and flag against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. Americanism is a vital, active living force. It means peace and strength, and the will and courage to live as free men in a free land. It is not just a word, it's a cause, a way of life and a very big challenge. We live in tumultuous times and it's a huge challenge at this time in this world. Americanism is an ideal of loyal patriotism, religious tolerance, righteous freedom, fearless courage, honest integrity and abiding faith in the commanding destiny of the United States. It is a fathomless love for the principles which led our forefathers to found this country. It is with these thoughts that I stand here today, along with Post 7 Adjutant Mary Albal. Unit 7 Auxiliary Chairperson Peggy Shreve. And chairperson for the post, Bob Post. At this time, at this time, I'd like to say that there's, there's no one more passionate about patriotism and Americanism than Bob Post. Bob can define patriotism with just three words: love of country. And what you're about to see and hear begin with an idea, his idea out of concern for where this country was headed. Bob?
Hold this one second, Bob.
I would need to readjust. I've got, I'd love to have this for Channel 3, but you're right, if I just move that podium a little bit, you're fixing to show the screen?
After he, after he gets through.
All right, when you do that, I'd like to move that podium back so that we can get a full shot of the, of the.
Yeah, that, that can be done.
You can handle that, can't you, Bob?
Yeah, we can, we can work on that. I'd like to thank the commission very much for the opportunity to be able to come out and talk to you about a very, very important item. And it came up as a priority for Frank B. Bartlett, Post Number 7, back in October of 2009. The American Legion of Buchanan wrote and approved a resolution that's purpose was to require that a class on patriotism be required in the curriculum of the West Virginia secondary school system. If I may, I would like to read that resolution. With a lot of work, this resolution was approved unanimously by our local post, District 3, and by the West Virginia Department of American Legion at the state convention in 2010. We worked with our local House of Delicates members and had several meetings with our state superintendent of schools, which back at that time, started with Steve Payne, which you all know, and then later went with Juriya Marple. Each meeting, the social studies coordinator for the state, Joey Wiseman, was in attendance. On January 5th, 2011, there was a publication for all West Virginia newspapers titled, "West Virginia to Incorporate Patriotism in Our History Classes." After the Americanism Committee of the Frank B. Bartlett, Post 7 examined this publication, we were not satisfied that it accomplished our intent. After going back to the state superintendent of schools and the coordinator for social studies, they reexamined it, and they reexamined our intent and approved what we were asking for. As a matter of fact, they went farther than we expected and approved a class from K through 12 in all West Virginia social study classes. Now, you never, if you've never had a chance to try to change the curriculum of a school system, you would appreciate what all we went through. These classes are to begin this year in the curriculum of the West Virginia school system. One of the things that Frank B. Bartlett, Post 7, agreed to do was to get testimonies from veterans on what patriotism means to them, and to get from those veterans who will share some actual combat act stories. The DVD we are going to show you, we feel comes from one of the most famous Buchanan and West Virginia residents. It was written by Stephen Koontz at my request, and we were fortunate to have Les Shreve II narrate into a DVD presentation. We would request your help as individuals in getting veterans you know that have combat experience to tell in a presentation about what patriotism means to them. The DVD we are going to show you, we hope, will be shown to all grades from the 6th through the 12th grade in all West Virginia schools. At this time, with your permission, I'll read our resolution that was passed. Whereas members of the American Legion represent those veterans who have served in protecting our country during wars and military conflicts, and whereas those veterans living today have. have memories that go back only to World War Two, and whereas it is the opinion and the feeling of the members of Frank B. Bartlett, Post Number Seven, that the service and patriotism of these veterans in current and past wars and military conflicts have been overlooked in our educational curriculum. And whereas unless students being schooled today have close relatives fighting in present conflicts who have fought in past conflicts or wars, then these students generally have no knowledge or history of these events. And whereas we as veterans' organization feel that it is important that this history has not, will not be overlooked in our educational system. And whereas we realize our country's freedom was founded and existed throughout our history only because of those who have fought, defended, and died for our country. Resolved therefore that Frank B. Bartlett, Post Number Seven of the American Legion, a corporation, request that the West Virginia Legislature pass legislation requiring the West Virginia Board of Education to mandate a court, a class on patriotism be taught in the curriculum of all West Virginia schools. This class should be how our country was founded with emphasis on wars and conflicts from the Second World War up to and including the current wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. This time period, we believe, takes in both the older and younger generations living today. The textbook to teach this class could and should include factual information from veterans living today. We as veterans feel it is a mandatory, for the future defense of our country, to teach our school system why it has been necessary to defend and protect our country from all foes who are a threat to our freedom, and instill once again, in our youth, in our youth, that patriotism that had to exist to keep our country free. Presented to the membership by approval by report of the Americanism Committee Chairman Robert R. Post on October the ninth, two thousand and nine, at a regularly scheduled pub meeting, and unanimously approved and accepted, presented to all posts in District Three and the West Virginia Department of the American Legion on January tenth, and unanimously approved and accepted, presented to the West Virginia Department of the American Legion at the Summer Convention of July two thousand and ten, and unanimously approved. Well, Les, I believe we're ready for the movie.
Computer went to sleep.
They'll do that, okay.
Can we talk about the Water Symbol War?
Or you can talk, you can talk, Mary.
Boy, while we're waiting on this to come up, talk to the, to them about the homeless.
Yes.
And what, you know, program that we have, working with the homeless, especially many of those people.
Well, I, that's, I guess, that you said that because-
Turn your mic up there, Mary. Turn it back up there while we-
I was just informed by Matthew that several of you gentlemen here are veterans. And as the Post Adjutant for the American Legion, we'd love you to come join us on September the ninth and come visit with us if you'd like and observe a meeting. And if you're interested in joining the American Legion, we'll talk with you about that and you can learn some more about our Americanism programs, our children and youth programs. And we do have a program for working with the homeless, okay? Actually, we work closely a little bit with the Elks Lodge. They're a veterans' organization also to serve veterans, and we work together with them on that. But we'd love to have you. And our meeting starts at seven. We have fellowship at six-thirty. And I guess this is not going just to you gentlemen that are here today, that goes to any Upsher County veteran who would like to come join us. We, and that's the American Legion building right next to the old Kanawa Lounge. So, join us at six o'clock, come in and visit a little bit and have some food and stay for the meeting.
Well, while Les is working on that computerization, which I hate.
Would it be possible to do what you're doing without-
I know. But, but the DVD, maybe we need to go get a television.
Wouldn't make any difference.
Wouldn't make any difference, okay. But what I will do is to read a letter that I had written to, how many of you know who Stephen Koontz is? I, I thought you would, you would all be aware of that. This was a letter that I had, first I had contacted Steve and asked him if he would do this. And he said, yes, he, he would certainly be glad to do it. And I asked, he and his wife came to my home and I explained to him what I wanted. And then later on, after we got his letter and his information that he had given us in terms of patriotism and what it meant to him, then I wrote him back this particular letter. Dear Steve, it has been quite some time since I talked with you. And there's a lot of, it went over a long period of time. It took us a long while to get a narrator for your testimony on patriotism. If you recall, I did contact you about doing this and you gave me your permission. I told you at the time that your feelings on patriotism would be used in every classroom in West Virginia. It turns out, after we completed the recording, which is entitled "The American Patriot," it is our feeling that this DVD will be shown to all West Virginia schools in grades six through twelve. It's more adaptable for six through twelve than what would be for the underage. We, I am enclosing a copy of "The American Patriot" for you, and after you view it, I would appreciate very much a call to let us know what you think of what was done. It turned out that the narrator is done by Leslie Shreve the Second, U.S. Air Force, who is the son of our American Legion Commander Les Shreve. Steve, I was very pleased with the outcome of "The American Patriot," and I hope you will be too. We expressed some technical difficulty. I'm glad I said that in front of all you people. Are you ready? I go, we're ready. American Patriot. May I turn that mic back down there?
"The American Patriot" by Stephen Koontz. What is patriotism? Is it a good thing or a bad thing? Is patriotism alive and well, or is it some fossil from the old days that we don't even have to think about anymore? What qualities do patriots have in common? And how would I know a patriot if I see one? America's had many patriots, and we'll talk about some of them. And from them, try to define the term patriotism. The patriot I revere the most was our first president, George Washington. He grew up in the mid-seventeen hundreds in colonial Virginia, one of the thirteen colonies on the eastern seaboard ruled by Great Britain. He got a decent education, excellent by the standards of the times, and could read and write and do math well enough to be a surveyor. He surveyed huge tracts of land in what is now Virginia, West Virginia, and Maryland. Virginia's governor commissioned Washington, a major in the militia, and sent him into the wilderness to help a private enterprise, the Ohio Company, build new settlements and posts for trading with the Indians. They ran into the French, who were expanding into the Ohio Valley. Soon, the clash of European rivalries exploded in America as the French and Indian War, and in Europe as the Seven Years' War. Major Washington, leading the company and militia, that is armed citizen volunteers, accompanied British General Braddock on his march to conquer Fort Duquesne at present-day Pittsburgh. Braddock's little army was ambushed. He was killed, and Washington helped save the command. He was young. He saw the blood and smelled the gunpowder and learned some valuable lessons in military leadership. In the ferment leading up to the revolution, the area around Boston, Massachusetts, was a hotbed of resistance to British colonial policies, which many saw as tyranny. You've heard of the Boston Tea Party, Samuel Adams and Paul Revere. You've probably also heard of Revere's midnight ride to warn the militia of the outlying towns that the British were marching from Boston to seize their weapons and gunpowder. It was there, on the outskirts of Boston, on the nineteenth of April seventeen seventy-five, that American patriots first stood tall enough to be seen and heard around the world: the Minutemen. Farmers and tradesmen willing to fight with only one minute's notice grabbed their muskets and shotguns and assembled on the village greens in the path of the advancing British troops. At Lexington, they refused to disperse. The British troops fired a volley, killing a few. At Concord, the troops ran into more militia, and after a sharp exchange of volleys began their retreat. The British columns, now seventeen hundred men counting reinforcements, were fired upon constantly, all the way back to Boston by militia members coming on the run. And some of the encounters became full-fledged battles. Over two hundred and fifty British soldiers were killed or wounded at Lexington and Concord and in the retreat to Boston. Think about it. By firing on the king's troops, these Americans were rebelling against the king's rule, committing treason. The penalty for treason was death. All the farmers who had aimed a musket or shotgun at the red-coated soldier risked the death penalty if British soldiers didn't kill them outright. Why did they do it? Because they believed in the justice of their cause, had the courage to fight for it, and if need be, die. The next day, militia, common citizens who had elected officers and agreed to obey orders, began arriving from all over New England. They bottled up the British in Boston and dug in to keep them there. Two months later, the British attacked a rebel formation on Bunker Hill, finally forcing the militia to retreat, although not before the British took more heavy losses. The Continental Congress realized it had a war on its hands and appointed the tall, red-headed soldier from Virginia, George Washington, as general in chief. He accepted the appointment, well knowing he would be hung as a traitor if he were captured. Every signer of the Declaration of Independence did the same thing. If the British captured him, he would be hung. In fact, every person in America knew that if the revolution failed, the British would hang every prominent rebel they could catch. Despite this reality, or perhaps an acknowledgement of it, the final sense of the Declaration of Independent States, and for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. John Hancock was the first man who signed the Declaration. He said, "I will sign my name so large that King can read it without his glasses." And he did. As the other delegates signed, Benjamin Franklin gave a sober warning. Gentlemen, we must all hang together, or assurably, we shall all hang separately. Would you sign a pledge to support your fellow citizens with your life and your honor? Then do it. Amazingly, every soldier, sailor, and airman who has enlisted in the armed forces of the United States in the past, right up to today, does just that. They put their life and their honor on the line for the benefit of you and me. Patriotism is faith and courage, with a willingness to act, to stand up, and to be counted. You know the rest. George Washington forced the British army to evacuate Boston and was himself forced to flee New York when the British used large formations of regular troops against his poorly-trained volunteer militia. Yet, in the bitter winter of seventeen seventy-seven, he devised the counter-stroke. He led his half-starred, freezing troops in a dangerous Christmas Eve crossing of the Delaware River, attacked the British at Trenton, and in a brilliant lightning campaign ran the British out of New Jersey and saved the revolution. It was Washington's strategy that led to the capture of British armies at Saratoga in seventeen seventy-seven and Yorktown in seventeen eighty-one, effectively ending the revolution. With the war won, the colonies were flat-broke. The national government was saddled with debts it had no way to pay. The national government was saddled with debts it had no way to pay. The government couldn't even pay its soldiers. Politicians argued endlessly, yet none of the young country's problems were effectively addressed. It seemed as if the lives and treasure the revolution had cost had been wasted. In this atmosphere of acrimony, self-interest, incompetence, and confusion, some of Washington's officers and friends urged him to do that only sensible thing. Clear yourself a dictator, they said, and use the army to take over the government. This was precisely the course chosen by Napoleon a few years later when he crowned himself emperor of France. George Washington refused. He was having none of it. He said that it was up to the people's representatives to solve the problems facing the new nation. He resigned his commission as a general and went home. Can you imagine it? Power, fame, the siren call to be the savior of your nation. And George Washington said, "No. Our elected representatives must work out the solutions that we can live with." This affirmation of faith and the ability of a free people to solve their own problem is, in my mind, one of the greatest acts of patriotism in American history. Think how different our history would have been if Washington had taken it upon himself to be the American Messiah. He could have done it, you know? He was hailed even then as the father of this country, the leader who had struck off British chains. The soldiers would have followed him. Yet, he went home to Mount Vernon on the Potomac and once again became a farmer. Four years later, after dark dismal days and much political turmoil, the Virginia Legislature selected Washington as one of its delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, where he was elected chairman. Listening carefully, saying little, he recited as the delegates debated on how a new government should be...
Probably not going to get out of this one, guys.
Les, where were we in the video? Yeah, it is pretty close in.
You don't have a speech history, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'll... The second letter that I'd like to read to you, I have basically completed the one that I'd written to Steve. So, after this was done and the DVD was sent to Steve, I received this letter back from him in turn. Dear Bob, thank you for the DVD of The American Patriot, which the American Legion Frank B. Bartlett, Post Seven, created for my short essay on patriotism. An essay that you asked me to write. I thought you and your fellow legionnaires did an excellent job. Mr. Shree did a good job of narration and painting that illustration, the work where we're well-chosen and apropos. All in all, I think the production captured the spirit of patriotism that I wrote about. To my mind, faith in the democratic process and the inherent goodness of one's fellow Americans are the essence of patriotism. We are all in this together. We shall sink or swim as a nation together. Our nation has many problems, as it has always had, but together, as a people united, we are grappling with those problems and trying to do our best to do the right thing as God gives us the light to see what that might be. Give my regards and best wishes to your fellow legionnaires and to all involved in creating the DVD. Like you, I hope that this DVD will be shown to all children in West Virginia school system for many years to come and have a positive, beneficial impact. Mine's Stephen Coontz. And it will be. We'll get this straightened out to the point where that will be... Again, I did have one more thing that I thought was important and I would say it was in a speech that I had given to the Rotary Club, but I think it's very appropriate for this meeting here today. You may be asking yourself why the American Legion believes it is necessary to get this class on patriotism in our school curriculum. We all have the opportunity to see our political system going downhill, and this has nothing to do with political party, but with votes. And I think you gentlemen up here certainly will agree with that. It is a feeling of the American Legion that to help correct our problem over a long period of time, it has to come from our youth. We must somehow get our politicians, who are elected in the future, to see as their number one priority patriotism, love of country, and Americanism, what America is all about. The only way to accomplish this, in our opinion, is to teach patriotism in our school system. Patriotism is love of country. You can look at it this way. Our country would not have survived all of the wars and military conflicts if it had not been for our forefathers and our love of country and patriotism. And I'll give a copy of our resolution to you all. If there's any questions, Les will answer.
I'd just, I'd just like to say in closing, in summarizing Americanism, I really apologize for the CD. It's not the CDs, the optics, it's the CDs, the computers hanging up for some reason. Americanism's the unfeeling love of country, loyalty to its institutions and ideals and eagerness to defend against all enemies, an individual allegiance to the flag, and a desire to serve the blessings of liberty to ourselves and posterity. In our continuing efforts to further advance Americanism and the visibility of the American flag to all, to everyone, Unit Seven Auxiliary and Post Seven joined together in a version of American flag from Main Street. The city of Buckhannon has agreed to provide the manpower, manpower for displaying the flags and a respective responsibility for doing so. Presentation of these flags will be accomplished at tonight's council meeting. I would ask the county to think about providing the necessary funding for the replacement and upkeep of these flags as required. The cost is not great, I'm sure you can work it out. We as veterans are continuously being thanked for our service, and I would be the first one to say, it does not give you a warm and fuzzy feeling to be, it does give you a warm and fuzzy feeling to be recognized. However, we should never forget, there are many types of service other than military, and we've seen some of those here today. Public service, elected officials, police, fire persons, religious activities, the list can go on and on. To that, to the commission, we say thank you for your continuing service. It requires much more than just military service to preserve the rights and freedoms we so enjoy today. Thank you and God bless America.
And thank you all very much for your presentation. And thank you very much for your efforts in keeping patriotism alive, and that's very true. If we can teach our children why we have the freedoms we have today and what it costs, I think it'll have a great impact on their thoughts toward what America's all about. We certainly appreciate all of your efforts in bringing about this great accomplishment. Thank you very much. Ten thirty, and we have discussion of personnel-related matter for nine-one-one dispatcher Kelly Babbin. Employment action considered a conclusion of hearing, executive session for West Virginia Code six-nine-eight-four. And Rick said so I didn't leave the viewing audience hanging. After this, then we will do our regular paperwork, so you'll know what we'll be doing afterward then. So, at this point in time, I would ask for a motion to enter an executive session. Stated?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. So, we will enter an executive session, our first, first, we will have Steve and Jake and our Jennifer and Megan and the three commissioners to start with. So, we'll go into Megan's office and...